I'd like to call this meeting to order for the regular session of the Board of Supervisors for July 11th, 2023. Go call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Here.
Little? Schwartz?
Here.
Valen?
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence this morning to reflect on our actions? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Prove me wrong. I'll wait for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay. Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. I'll put comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to comment on anything that is not on today's agenda? Good morning. Please give your name and address.
Stephanie Schulte, 6843 East Washburn Road, Waterloo.
Thank you. And your reason for being here today.
Okay. Today I'm here because, well, I'm sure you guys are all well aware of the, what was happening across the street with the neighbor at the Gilbertville Mill. And so we're the ones that have the garage. And my concern, I guess, or I guess, I don't know. We didn't get a permit. So after 2016, we had gotten FEMA money to re-fix our garage up. So we did that. And I guess we didn't know we needed a permit. And now, obviously, I'm well aware of that. And I got the letter from Seth saying about how we needed to get a no-rise certificate and a variance and all that. And so I called Des Moines for the FEMA to see about the no-rise certificate. And I was asking him when it was put in. He's like, the 1950s. And he said about how, and I'm like, okay. And I said, so the no-rise? And he's like, well, yeah, I mean, that's, it's been a rule since then or whatever. And so he kind of, the way he said it made me, you know, obviously, wonder about it. So then, the depot, which is a couple, three houses or places down, they had just gotten a permit. And I talked to the, one of the head guys over there. And they, he said they just got a permit. They didn't have to do a no-rise certificate. And like, when the mill was added in 93, like, the extension, they didn't have to do a no-rise permit. And my aunt that lives farther down, she never had to get, her mother built a house, and she never got a no-rise. Because half of Washburn is in this 100-year flood. So I guess my question is, why are we, and I asked Seth that, and Seth is like, well, nobody else is in question, just you guys are. You guys are the ones that are getting pointed out. And I said, okay, well, can we at least apply for the permit to make sure that it's going to pass before, because the guy at FEMA said that it's going to cost thousands of dollars to get this no-rise certificate? And he's like, no, you got to get this step before you can do that step. But I guess my question is, and I asked him who I go to, and he didn't know. And so I guess, why we have to get the no-rise certificate when nobody else had to?
Okay. So you'd like us to check into it a little bit further for you? I was going to say, because obviously, we wouldn't have that response.
Right. So I don't know if nobody knew about it, and now they just, you know, I don't know. This is the whole situation.
Is there paperwork that you could end up providing to our office or something that you've received, at least to give us more information?
From like Seth?
Or, or just whatever you've received, I guess, from Seth or otherwise? We can get it from Seth, obviously, ourselves, too.
Yeah.
If it's just something from him, but...
Yeah. I mean, and I just took notes when I talked to the guy on, at FEMA, or whatever.
Okay. Well, we can certainly look into it further and get back to you. And I was going to say, as far as having your name again and contact information.
Okay.
Then we have that on file, then, so we can follow up with you.
Okay.
But you have reached out to Seth already, so he's got some of that information, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Super. Great. Well, thank you.
All right.
Certainly something we're unaware of, I think.
Okay.
So we'll certainly check into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comments, something that's not on the agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak today on anything? Okay. Moving on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved. Seconded.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $411,342.86. And we are also making a payment from the Sheriff's 6040 Fund for $2,067.28. And the only kind of large payment in here is a construction payment for pavement markings to Vogal Traffic Services, an amount of $163,051. Everything appears to be in order, unless you have any questions. Hearing none? I guess please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little? Tom, I don't know if you're on mute, but we can't hear you. Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Valen?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four, a presentation from the Urban County Coalition. Mr. Larry Grant and Mr. Gary Grant, Mayor Larry Murphy and Mr. Gary Grant are here today with us to give us a legislative update and solve the problems of the world, right?
Good morning. My name is Gary Grant, and I am one of the lobbyists for the, one of your lobbyists for the Urban County Coalition. First of all, I'll introduce my business partner, Larry Murphy. He is the other half of our lobbying team. We'd like to thank you all for being members of the Urban County Coalition, for the opportunity to represent you guys in Des Moines. We are, of course, not in Des Moines today, because they're only, this is a special session. It's very narrowly focused, so they'll only be focusing on one issue. So that's why we're not in Des Moines today, and we're grateful for that. Because we understand that it's going to be an interesting day, regardless of which side of the, of that particular issue you fall. So I want to thank you all again. And I kind of want to just dive right in. Please, I'll make this, this kind of short and sweet, hit some of the highlights. We sent you folks kind of the electronic briefing material. If you have any questions or comments on any of it, we're happy to answer those today. Or if you think of comments later on, as I'm sure Lynda can tell you that, you know, we're always available to you folks to answer questions, please don't hesitate to call us kind of whenever questions come up. So this was an interesting session. We are, it was challenging, because there was quite a bit that happened in the very last kind of closing days of the session, one of which was a very large property tax agreement that the House and the Senate sort of came across, or came out with, literally in the last week of session. Budgets that were, that went through committee processes with no numbers in them, which was very unusual. Usually, both the House and the Senate roll out their versions of budgets. This year, the House rolled out its version of a variety of budgets that they normally start. They went through the subcommittee and the committee process, so you could kind of see what was going on. The Senate, actually, they passed several of their budgets through subcommittee and full committees with no numbers and no personnel levels. So it was, it was challenging to kind of keep an eye on what was going on. And it took us sort of quite a while to figure out what was going on afterwards, because once they did roll out numbers, they were agreed to, they went through, and they were voted on. Let me talk a little bit about the property tax bill. That's kind of the most impactful, I think, thing that the legislature did this year. There were a couple of different things that they did with property taxes. The Senate File 181 was the early one, which corrected a mistake that the Department of Management made. And the Department of Management actually knew about the mistake. They just didn't really mention it to cities and counties until after the budgets were certified. So this, it required a legislative change to roll back. I know that in some of the other counties, I don't know what the impact was for Senate File 181 in Blackhawk County, but I know in Lynn County, it was like 1.7 million.
Ours, I'm going to say it was maybe 600,000, five or six, yeah.
So not, not nothing.
No, it's definitely not nothing.
Yeah. So it, and you folks have a challenging enough job without having to go back in and find $600,000 in a budget that you spent probably months kind of preparing and debating. So the other one was the large one that, and the number escapes me right now, House File 718. This, this one was the one that effectively capped growth at 3%. And not, not assessment growth, but this is a budget cap. So regardless of how much, you know, new, new growth that you have, your budget will be capped at 3%. Now, you have to meet certain growth benchmarks before you can even get to that 3%. So one of the things that, that we were trying to communicate to the legislature is, you know, the Urban County Coalition has, has a unique advantage in that it's five, you know, the five largest counties in eastern Iowa. Now, the likelihood, and there are only, I think, about 15, less than 15 counties right now in Iowa that I think are experiencing meaningful growth. And Urban County Coalition, you know, are among those. So the likelihood is that all of the counties in the Urban County Coalition will probably most likely meet benchmarks for that growth to reach, to be able to realize the 3% in your budgets. Just, and that won't keep up with inflation, is fairly high. Where, what's going to, what's the most meaningful impact that this, we believe this will have is on smaller cities and smaller counties that aren't experiencing any meaningful growth. Because I think that those folks will be challenged to keep up with, just to keep up with inflation. This also ratchets back down the 810 levy and the 350, the general basic levies for cities and counties. So there were counties that were, and some cities that were levying above kind of that threshold. And that's ratcheted back. So not only will this have kind of a dramatic effect on the amount that, or what you'll be able to pay for kind of going forward, keeping up with inflation, folks that were levying at above, you know, above the threshold, their respective thresholds for their general basics are going to be, I think, even more challenged. I know that's a very sort of brief overview of what this does. And I'll be honest, that I think that folks that are smarter than we are, county finance directors, for example, are still struggling to get their arms around what some of the impacts are. I know that we, we've, we try to, we're trying to provide information to you folks and to them as soon as we get it. I know that there was a PowerPoint slide from the Department of Management that kind of went over some of this. I think that provided some information. I do think that there are, that city and county finance directors are still waiting on some guidance from Department of Management about how some of this will apply. So with that, if you folks have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them on the property tax bill. Michelle may have to answer some of them. Wow.
Yeah.
That is a first. But thank you all for not putting us on the spot and having me say, we don't, I don't know, several times. That I do appreciate. There are some other, the state reorganization bill, the Senate File 514 was, didn't have a, didn't have a great deal of impact on county functions, per se, but it did have some effect on some of the things that counties are involved in, one of which is community corrections. And this is one of the more, one of the more controversial sort of changes, I think, from one, the ones we were watching. County, community corrections will no longer be under the purview of judicial districts. They'll be under the purview of the Department of Corrections. The boards, the, the, the community, the community corrections boards will most like, it sounds to me like in the reorganization bill, that these will just be advisory boards, that they won't have any real authority. The Department of Corrections will kind of have sole authority on it. And this caused some concern on behalf of folks who are, some of our folks who are involved in community corrections, because there's a, there's a difference in philosophy between the judicial districts and the way they approach, approach community corrections and the way the Department of Corrections approaches community corrections. I think community corrections always saw itself as having more of a rehabilitation focus and corrections having more of an incarceration focus. And I think that that's one of the concerns going forward, is that maintaining that sort of rehabilitation focus. Yeah. Yeah. The other, the other, the other reorganization is under, that, this is the, this wasn't under state reorg, but this was under the Department of Health and Human Services omnibus bill. The regional governance boards for mental health regions now, they're reducing the number of supervisors on these boards. Now that they'll be a 49%, instead of comprising the majority, the supermajority of the boards, they'll be 49%. So they're moving, the Department of Human Services feels that because there's not really any county money in the system anymore, that they're going to be, they want to move toward a more advocate and provider focus on these boards. So that wasn't under state reorg, that was under Department of Human Services omnibus bill. So that's another, that's another change that I think that folks are, are watching with some trepidation, because, not that advocates and providers won't make good board members, I do think that they have valuable perspectives that I think are, are heard right now. But I think the difficulty is, is that when you have, when you have advocate, when you have boards comprised primarily of advocates and providers, you end up sort of focusing more on, a little bit, you end up focusing more on certain services, the providers that may be on the board, because sometimes you run into that, you know, that, that kind of old adage, that when you're, when you're a hammer, every problem looks like a nail. We also believed and we argued that having supervisors comprise the majority of this board provided an additional layer of accountability, because we do think that sometimes folks, the farther away from, you get from your respective counties, the more sometimes you forget that county supervisors are in fact elected officials and that you have to justify your decisions to a constituency, much like state legislators do. So adding another layer of accountability and to something like the mental health regional boards, we didn't think was a bad thing. So we're, we're going to be watching this going forward, because we, we do think that supervisors provide a valuable perspective for this. The Iowa Water and Land Legacy, I do want to thank you folks up here. Iowa Water and Land Legacy is something that we supported, we have supported funding as an Urban County Coalition. What we haven't supported is using the scooping of local option sales taxes to do that. I want to thank particularly Blackhawk County. Catherine Nichols has been really involved in helping us to kind of motivate some of her colleagues across the state to talk about how valuable these resources are when utilized, when utilized as the voters have indicated, that, that in almost every jurisdiction that has passed local options, has been successful in passing local option sales tax, there's an infrastructure component to it, most, generally roads. So, and, and, and we tell, you know, we tell legislators when we're talking about this is that, okay, think of it like this. It's our county supervisors, you know, they, they like to make sure that their roads are main, their roads are maintained, that's critical. But if you keep reducing the amount of revenue to provide the needed services, you scoop our local option sales tax, you return it to us, and we're no longer bound by a revenue purpose statement, it won't be very long before that revenue gets siphoned off to do other things, because there just won't be a choice. So as much as you may like to spend that money on roads going forward, now, because of the revenue purpose statements, you have to. If you no longer have to, good intentions aside, that money will, will eventually bleed out to other areas, because there are all, I don't have to tell you folks this, there are always more priorities than there are funds to fund them. So that didn't pass this year. We expect to see that coming up next year, a proposal to scoop local option sales taxes into a large state pool, that to be redistributed out to cities and counties. I'm not sure how that works. We are being told that however much you generate, you'll get back. We've also communicated to legislators that, look, as much as, and this is not a terribly effective lobbying tactic, so I wouldn't suggest you try this, but that in the, in the interest of being honest, my clients have a trust issue with the legislature. We have absolutely no doubt that this, one cent, one cent is ballpark about $480 million. We have no doubt, at least I have no doubt, and I wish I could convince my clients that this were not the case, regardless of who's in charge, $480 million, a $480 million pot of money at the state makes an awfully tempting target when they have priorities as well. So my clients have expressed that they have absolutely no reason to believe that that money that is scooped will be returned in its entirety for eternity. Just, that has, that's no reflection on party, that's no reflection on, on ideology. Could be Democrat, Republican, Independent, or what have you. It makes an awfully tempting target for any legislator of any stripe. So we're also a little concerned with, because we represent the Urban County Coalition, one of our other concerns is, is that because we, we represent areas of the state that are growing, that it won't be too long before there is an issue of equity, sort of that's introduced into this. And because you folks, you know, kind of are concerned with growing Blackhawk County, the respective city councils in your area are growing their respective cities, how long is it going to be before somebody from, you know, legislator from, you know, I won't pick on any specific county, but outside of Blackhawk County says, you know, it's not really fair that when my constituents go shopping, they go shopping in Waterloo or Cedar Falls, and we don't get to, we don't get to reap any of those benefits. We think it would be more fair if some of those resource, some of those local option sales tax dollars were spread around more equitably. Well, in this particular case, I'm not terribly interested in equity. Right now, we get to keep what we generate. We get to keep the growth that we generate, that's put into projects that are outlined in revenue purpose statements, and they're also, they're also used for property tax rate reductions. That's, I'm concerned about the will of the voters that have expressed kind of those priorities. So those are kind of some of the challenge, that's one of the big challenges I would expect to see next year, because both chambers of the legislature and the governor have said that this was only phase one in property tax relief. So we'll, we're hoping to see what they have in mind. I have an, I have an idea what they have in mind. I think they may be done with us for a little bit. I think they may, if I were, if I were a betting man and I were placing bets, I would say next year is the year of the education levy. But that's just a guess. So there are a variety of other smaller bills that, that, that were considered and we helped to defeat, one of which was regulations governing stormwater discharge, which would have effectively ended counties and cities' ability to regulate stormwater discharge on developments. We think that was a really bad idea. I think we delayed that. It's, that will be back next year. The legislator that was behind that already said that they're, they're, because they didn't get this, what they thought was a very reasonable restriction, that they're coming back next year with something that we really won't like. So, okay, well, we'll, we'll wait to see that. With that, I don't want to take up any more of your time than necessary. I'm happy to answer any questions on any issue that I didn't cover, that you might have seen in your briefing books or anything that, that I did cover.
Another challenging year, obviously, much like the last, maybe even a little more so, I guess, I would think, too. And I was going to say, our conservation department and staff, as well as the board, was very helpful also in, in the lost fight, I was going to say, recognizing, we all said how important it is for us for the, for the, the way, the items that they're actually kind of earmarking, but it's just like, not the way, right way to do it.
Right. And we're, we're very clear that, you know, as an Urban County Coalition, we do support IWS, and we do support the funding of IWS. We're just not a big fan of the, the way that they have proposed to do it. So it skipped over a little, a little, a couple of steps, though, in that, is what, what the proposal is, and I'll be very general here, is that there are about 20 jurisdictions in Iowa that don't have a local option sales tax. So this, this, the proposal would impose a statewide, effectively, a local option sales tax, scoop that into a pool, fund IWS, and then, yes, I'm about to use this word, backfill the hole that's in that fund, and then distribute that out to the jurisdictions that have, that had the local option, option sales tax. The backfill's where we had kind of the hard part.
Yeah. I know you mentioned that amount being 480 million being tempting, but I thought it's also based on previous, I was, actions that we somewhat distrust, that we'll be able to always have.
Well, and that fund will grow. And that, the other, I don't want to get off in kind of a...
Doom and gloom?
With doom and gloom, or, or sort of, you know, endless what-if scenarios, but in areas that are growing, sales tax receipts grow. So today, it might be 400, it ballparked 480 million. 20 years from now, it may be 580 million. So at what point does the legislature say, $480 million is a lot of money, this extra 100 million that was, that was the growth, we're just going to hang on to that? So, yeah.
You talked a little bit about the education levy. You think is one thing that's going to come up next session. Anything else in your, first of all?
Well, I, income tax, I think is going to be, the, the chambers seem to be in very, in a little different places on it. I think this, we're, we're working our way in Iowa toward about a 3.9% flat tax for income. That's kind of where the current law sort of, over time, will, will get to us. The Senate has expressed an interest in getting that number to zero. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not a spreadsheet guy, but 47% of tax receipts in Iowa for the state are, are income taxes. I don't know what replaces that, but I haven't seen that proposal. So I think the tax issues are going to be top of mind, because it's, because it's an election year. So I wouldn't expect a lot besides taxes. The session's also shorter by about 10 days, so.
And I think, just to illustrate between the chambers, particularly on this local option sales tax piece, the Senate is the one that's really pushing hard for that. The House has been very best-ludewarm, and their line, and since the election year, kind of what Gary's alluding to, their line has been, why would we, in an election year, basically raise taxes, which would be in those areas that don't have a sales tax, and have that as a campaign issue? So I think the, while, while we're facing quite a bit of challenges, both on centralizing of authority at the state level, at the expense of local government, the reality is, I think we have some ability in terms of lobbying and messaging, that the concern about the perception of raising taxes of some kind, does have impact on at least half of the General Assembly, and I suspect even in the Senate. There's definitely some options for us, but I think the, Gary's point about the school aid formula, that's, that's, as you know, that's the big piece on the property tax side. And that becomes quite a target for them as well.
You have comments, questions?
Nothing nice to say about the legislature.
I know.
It's, it's just frustrating.
It's, it's just frustrating that they're also gonna, again, spend their, so many times, well, protect, you know, attacking my community and attacking LGBTQ communities instead of finding ways that can be better partners, the state and local government. So I really don't have a high opinion of very many of them.
So thank you for their services and what you do for us, because I said, too, and that we're unable to be there, so I appreciate what you, all the work that you do. I know sometimes you feel, like I said, it's probably not, not productive, but we know it is, like arguing for our, on our behalf, so thank you.
Has its days, but it's generally very rewarding. We enjoy it. We're thankful that you folks are members of the Urban County Coalition, and it will, hopefully, hopefully next year, they could just get in and out and budgets, maybe some income taxes. And I think, I, I get the impression, though, that they've done what they're going to do to us, by us, I mean, kind of local governments, for, for, at least for a couple of years. Yeah, I think the educate, next year will be the year of the education levy.
Always another challenge, but yeah, no, like I said, appreciated. I said so many times this year, I said, all, the five counties, as they met weekly, I said, it was, we couldn't, it was more emphasis on when will the session be over, how soon, because they did a lot of, we're trying to do a lot of damage, I guess, from a local level at the end of the session, too.
And we appreciate you guys being involved, and, and as we move through election years, you know, not, not this season, but we know that as elected officials, you, you kind of bump into some of these folks occasionally at events, and we just appreciate reminding them the value of local control. One of the, the other things we'll be working on coming up is, we really need to do a better job as a, as a, as a coalition of kind of bringing forward unfunded mandates. We, we've, we've tried to chip away at some of them. The legislature actually, believe it or not, has kind of shown an interest in maybe taking a look at some of them, so we'll keep you posted on that. But yes, we'll, we'll be reaching out to you and, and some of your department heads and asking them in the future that, as you're doing budgets, make sure that, and, and we'd encourage you folks to use your soapboxes when you're talking to your constituents, make sure that when you're talking about your budgets and your property tax levies, you are, as elected officials, have to take responsibility for decisions you make. Please make sure that you're letting people know when you are making decisions based on factors over which you have no choice. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. I didn't ask, was there staff or anyone, Kathy or Mike, anybody that had any comments, questions, or others as well? Thank you. We'll move on to item five, receive project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, just an update on the roads. Our bridge crew is continuing to work on replacing the, the pipe down on Waters Road. And then the second round of desk control should be applied towards the end of this week and, and certainly into next week, depending on the vendor and, and their timing of coming into the county to spray that. And then lastly, our roadside biologist and our summer intern, they are making good progress on getting the northwest portion of the county applied with some herbicides this year. Can I answer any questions about the roads? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your multiple correspondence regarding Waters Road.
Good morning, Board. Anna Knapp, HR Generalist. I just wanted to send a quick reminder to all employees that Wilmark is here today for their onsite visit, and will be here again on the 25th. They will be here from 10 to 4:00 in the lower level conference room. They're here to assist with any questions regarding our, our transition to Wilmark, as well as to inform employees how they can maximize our healthcare benefits. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anyone else in the room? Is there anyone on Zoom? Hearing none. We'll move on to minutes approved for July 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. At all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Consent agenda. Following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove something for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
If there's no discussion, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
He has told me he's online and hears us. He's something, problem with the mic, but I know that doesn't help with the vote, but he can hear, so, thank you.
Well, I guess you could ask him to put a comment in if he wants to vote no on anything or something like that.
He's saying yes to me now, so, okay, great. Did you hear that comment, Tom, then? If you, if you will assume that it's a yes, as long as you're online, unless you comment no?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item eight, contracts and agreements. Discussion possible board action to amend the May 10, 2022 approval of purchase for a minibus from Hogland Bus Company for the purchase price of $103,728 to $118,683, which is an increased cost of $14,955 from the original bid price, and using federal American Recovery Plan funds, be accepted and approved as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks. Mike?
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. And as expected, with the vehicle market, and we've seen this numerous times with a lot of different departments, this turtle top van, which we were looking at to expand our environmental education program at our nature center, was delayed, delayed, delayed. They had finally given us a delivery date for this vehicle of December. The original delivery date was May of '23. They pushed that to December, and now they're saying that that particular van with those specs will be pushed at least to neck to the summer of '24, and maybe even longer. They're, they're not sure. And it's all due to chassis issues with Ford. Ford produces the chassis, and they are that far behind. But what they've done is they've offered an alternative to that, one that they say they can provide. They could, they could provide basically the same van at that December date, which they had given us a while ago, and the only difference in the vehicle and the specs is it has a limited slip, it would not have the limited slip rear differential, which is not a big deal to us. It just says that if you get in the mud, one tire might spin and the other one might go ahead and pull. Well, we don't plan to have this thing, we're not gonna off-road this thing by any means. But, so here we are, we actually expected this to happen, we just didn't know how much the increase was going to be. So obviously, from the time that this was approved, our nature center staff and our entire staff has, we have planned events, we've planned programming around this thing and the whole thing. It's been a disappointment when it was pushed off six months. We actually had events lined up for this summer to use it for, weren't able to do that, so be it, that's, that's what happens. So we're here today, they've raised the price almost $15,000 on us, and so we're asking you, do we move forward or do we tell them? And they're waiting for an answer, so we bring it to you today. So I'm open for questions.
Just the question I had was on that slipper differential. Did we spec that out? That is something that we wanted previously?
We didn't spec that out. He actually, in an email, I have it here, he actually mentioned that he's the one that put that in there. He threw it in there, he just thought it might be an advantage for us. Apparently, at the time he put that in there, it wasn't going to increase the cost because our bid was 103, a little over 103,000. So he did state in an email that he put that in there, the, the dealer.
Okay, that was one of the questions I had. If that's something we wanted, was it, what we felt was valuable, not that you say?
We didn't even spec it from the beginning, so.
And that had nothing to do with the cost, then? So it's just totally the?
Yep. Yeah, this is, from the time, from the time this was bid, we are now two model years past, and that's where the increases come.
How about the vehicle now that we're using? Not even close? I mean, how are we transporting?
It's just a, a much different model. It's a, it's more of a, I don't want to say a cargo van, but it's a, it's a passenger van that will carry 10 kids and two, two naturalists or two, two people to, to do the programs. And really, what we were looking for here is, because of the demand that we're, we're looking at, we could double the size of the programs that we could take to these areas that we utilize these vans. Instead of being able to take 10 kids, we could take 20. And, and the demand is there, we're seeing it. Those programs fill in, in just hours when we, when we post them. And so a lot get, a lot get left out along the way. We're trying to, to duplicate those programs more and more, you know, throughout the summer as, as we have staff, but the van was going to help us expand that and, and get more kids out there, creek stomping and, and going to Makoka, the caves, and all the places that we take those kids, so.
I think that was one of the first items we even put on our list of projects because we saw the benefit.
Yep.
Of having that, too, so. So as far as from the ARPA funds, I think we took it, though, from the lost revenue side, so it wasn't from any of the special?
Yeah, it was from government services, yep.
So it's actually just a matter of cost?
It's a matter of cost, yeah.
Any discussion, comments?
I was really looking forward to doing some off-roading in that, but.
Yeah, we were, too.
Makes sense to go with what's gonna be available, really, because as you said, you know, it could come a year from now and then be told, there's still delays.
Yeah.
And my concern is it's gonna increase again.
Yeah, and, and that's true, Dan. I, I don't know, it could. You know, one of the things that, just to throw it out there, we got, when we originally bid these vehicles, we, we only received two bids. One was the, well, it was $99,944, but we added some safety features to it, which brought it up to the 103,000. But the other bid for the same vehicle was out of Sedalia, Colorado, and it was $149,870. So it was a significant difference in, in the two bids, and those were the only two we received. This Hogland is, is out of Marshalltown, and it was significantly cheaper, so.
So does anyone want to make a motion, or do we want more comments? Or, I was gonna say for it, so we're good for that? Everything to accept as is? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, sweet, I'll do a resolution then. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little? Leyland?
Yes. I don't see a no, by the way, so I'll assume, then, Tom, sports as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B, resolution that request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same, to purchase one used 2015, excuse me, Ford F-550 in the amount of $54,753.49 from Bill Caldwell Ford Hudson, Iowa.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathy?
Yeah, in our FY '24 budget, we have budgeted $70,000 for a used truck for our roadside biologist that would contain a spray, spraying apparatus and a, a large tank to hold chemicals to do our spraying. If you recall back in May, well, a few weeks prior, we had started looking for a used vehicle, and being the market, with the market the way it is, we had come across one here locally in Hudson with Bill Caldwell Ford. In May, we asked you to write a letter of intent to hold the vehicle until after July 1st, when we could actually pay them for the vehicle. Today, we are following up and just being, we want to ask your permission, your approval to actually write them the check to pay for the vehicle for the, the $54,753. Just refresh your memory, at the time, a few months ago, we looked and there were several other vehicles, none of them were in Iowa at the time, so we opted to go with this locally, local vehicle from Bill Caldwell Ford. Can I answer any other questions about this?
You mentioned there were some repairs or some things done to that, and that's all been completed?
Right, that, they needed to do a few minor repairs to the vehicle, and that has all been completed. It's sitting there waiting for us to, to pay for it and pick it up.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Thank you. Item nine, other business. Resolution to approve amended bidding and purchasing requirements and procedures as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. I was gonna say, Mike, I know Amanda's not here today, I didn't know if this is something, I know you submitted to us, that you want to do.
Yep, I will go ahead and, and kind of give an overview. First of all, I would ask that it be approved with a modest, with a modest amendment, and that is to add, under Section J, which is about opening bids for the public bid openings, we add the phrase for projects exceeding $100,000 before the beginning of the first sentence. And the reason for that is simply because those are the category that we typically require public hearing for, public bid opening for. But besides that, I'll kind of just give a few of the, of the highlights of this. First of all, this revised policy allows quotes for purchases to include prices quoted on a website or in a catalog. It doesn't necessarily require the vendor to submit a written proposal. What, what often happens under the current policy is it's difficult to get certain vendors to give you a proposal, but you can see a price list to order a product. And so this will enable you to price compare those items as well. This has come up particularly often with Al and his department when they're looking for certain computer equipment. It also clarifies that the board is whichever board governs approval. The old one would specify board as supervisors, which technically didn't apply in the case of conservation or health, and in, in the case of many of the approvals that are done over at VA. This one will just simply says board, and then specifies that the board is whichever board has that authority. It raises the small purchase threshold from $1,000 to $5,000. On the old policy, any purchase up to $1,000 did not have to be competitively bid, although the, whoever was responsible for making that purchase was to, to price shop, and, and that remains the case, but now we raised that threshold to $5,000. A number of departments had expressed concerns about that. This requires a minimum of three quotes or prices for projects in the $25,001 to $100,000 range. Previously, probably by oversight, there was no minimum stated for that range, even though the lower category had a minimum of three, and so we have, we fixed that. This allows the use of cooperative purchasing programs. Now, in the past, the policy allowed for state bid, which is one such cooperative purchasing program, but we're also seeing a number of others that are used by other states, are used by other, other counties or other governmental subdivisions. This is where you have a, a program that gets a, you know, kind of has large purchasing power that, that gets competitive price quotes from different dealers or different manufacturers. This allows the use of those programs, not just the state of Iowa program. This also includes a provision for the purchase of used equipment. It requires adequate price shopping and price checking, but at the same time, it doesn't require us to submit a request for proposal. This has been kind of a, an area where departments have struggled in the past, because if you wanted to, if you saw good, say, used pickup, and you wanted to get it, and you knew it was very competitively priced, by the time you went through the competitive bidding process, it was gone. And so what this does is it allows somebody, much like what engineering recently did with the, with the purchase of the truck we discussed just a little bit ago, it allows them to look at, well, what's, what else is out there? How do we know it's competitive? What are they charging for it? What do the book values say? And, and it requires that the department who is making that purchase do those kind of checks to make sure that the price is competitive, but it allows for purchase of that with board approval without going through a formal competitive bidding process. This allows the board to approve, if requested, and, and if the board decides that it's warranted, alternative purchasing procedures if competitive bidding is problematic for some reason. This has come up recently in vehicle purchases. While there are cooperative bid programs, it would allow, it would allow some of, it would allow us to look at. it would allow us to look at, i- if necessary, that there would be a reason to say, okay, that's a competitive price, let's jump on it right now. Um, but the board would have to approve that. Uh, this cleans up the emergency repairs provision in paragraph L. Uh, previously, that referenced a statute that, uh, requi, actually re, was a procedure for making an emergency repairs levy or passing an emergency repairs levy. That wasn't what our emergency repairs provision had envisioned. That's still out there under state code, but this is just how do you approve it if it's an emergency repair? And it allows for a special session to, to vote on that immediately. Or, uh, in the case that we've seen once in a while where Rory's had to have something done literally immediately, might be midnight, uh, it allows for it to be approved after the fact. This also adds a provision, uh, in paragraph R that allows the county to reject bids from entities who are delinquent in taxes or other obligations owing to the county. Uh, Supervisor Little had brought this up. This has been a part of some RFPs. Uh, this puts it into the, uh, the policy that this is something that is allowed and encouraged, uh, while not putting it as an absolute mandate because we understand there can be circumstances where, uh, sometimes it's confusing who actually owes the taxes, uh, or, or whatever the obligation may be. So with that, are there any questions?
Quick question on the three bids requirement between, I think, $25,000 and $100,000, is that correct?
Correct.
So when there's, what, what is the process then if there's two bids submitted?
Well, if, it, it requires you to seek three.
Okay.
And so if there's only two submitted, then you go with the two that you got or go with the one that you got if you want to.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. You know, we've run into that situation a lot lately.
I think, I think overall, the, the policy changes open up more avenues to seek competitive prices, well, through the, the other cooperative, um, programs outside of just the state one. Um, but also the, the ability to just go up and, and look on catalogs and look on, on websites for companies that might not want to go through the work of submitting a proposal, but might have the better price.
Thank you. There's quite a few things that looked at the Policy Review Committee, so thank you for that. Sounds like there are more to look at in the future too.
Yes.
So I appreciate that and efforts. Any other questions or comments or Mike or anyone? Okay.
The only thing I would remind the board is that we're seeking to have the one, to have this approved with, uh, the phrase for projects exceeding $100,000, uh, added to the beginning of paragraph J for the public opening of bids.
Everyone's all right with that addition that made the motion in second?
Yes.
Grant has that, all right? And please answer as your name is called. I'm gonna try, we think the sound's been corrected, but we'll find out.
Probably so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll see.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Chalka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Thank you.
Item B, discussion possible board action to reestablish the community services online portal for fiscal year '24 for 30 days starting August 1st, 2023. And this is something, when we say reestablish, you just really meant open it up for '24?
Just open it up.
And I think, different about it. And so it's open for discussion. Any comments, questions? I think one of the things, Mike, we, we talked about with the application previous, when we'd started out, we'd had a monthly kind of reimbursement, a request for reimbursement, and we had talked then at least to do it quarterly, to not continue monthly kind of correspondence, having to go back and forth. I know Michelle's even mentioned could be twice a year or something too, but I don't know if that's something the board wants to discuss. It could be others, but it was just like, did not have to do monthly, but.
Especially for smaller ones, I, I think allowing just an annual payment for some entities might be appropriate.
But, but the only thing I thought about that though is that they'd be at the, they wouldn't receive their funding until the very end of the year then, and they might.
Well, or at least until after they've provided enough services.
Yeah, if they've done it in the, yeah.
Yep.
Midterm, it'd be fine, but I just thought, so is that something we want to discuss a little bit more? Or how do we want to? I guess those are things subject to discussion and seeing what we want to finalize with it, but I just thought too, the application process, I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at that and decide if there, or maybe you'd like to more time for it, to see if there was something that the application itself, um, you were approving that again or not?
Yeah, no, I think, I think there was a good amount of thought that went into preparing, um, the criteria on that application. So I think, um, and I think it's good to be doing this here at the start of the fiscal year because we, in a situation last year, there was some money left in it that we didn't utilize.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and there's certainly the need in the community, so.
And, and I don't know what board thoughts were. I think we were thinking we'd just probably make advan, take advantage of those funds that weren't utilized in '23 and just make those as part of what we had.
Yeah, I would roll it into it.
And so, yeah. Do, do you have off the top of your head, Michelle, what that amount would be so we can?
I believe not awarded, there was $18,500 still available.
Okay, so $118,500 would be what we'd look at in the future. Okay, for this year, super. Um, any other questions or comments? So the one thing I thought too, you mentioned in the, for 30 days, and I think the last, at least the few we've done that kind of had that window open, but it was very familiar for everyone of what our process was. We kind of changed it, I think, um, in the last couple of years when we had that, um, Rob Sand directive that changed what we were doing and the timeline and kind of made us take a second look at everything. And then all of a sudden, we were kind of forced to try to hurry and get something in place and tried to do that last year, I believe. I would, I would just like to see if we could maybe extend that a little bit longer so we could get the word out and have, I think the whole point of us trying to make this go public and have as much information out there available was to let everybody have an opportunity for it. So 30 seemed a little quick, but if that, that was the only thing otherwise.
Wasn't married to 30.
Yeah, I would do even two months or, you know.
Or something like that, just to, you know, so we could make sure everybody's had the, as much as we can. Not that there's a lot of funding there. I know that goes quickly too, but.
Sure.
Any thoughts? Do we still have you on sound, Tom? Any comments?
Yeah, I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's working, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you now, so that's great. Just checking if you had something you wanted to add. I keep checking my phone and it doesn't always work real well either, but, so thanks.
Tell Cory he's fired.
Okay, yeah, he, he, he's here, yep, you're fired for all the silence that was here earlier. Yep, he's leaving the room. Okay, um, let's see, so starting maybe, we'd start at August 1st unless there's an issue or concern of that, everything else good role. The application, we can take a look at that if we want to change that to, as far as, I mean, because that won't be ready for a little while, but do we want to give, um, quarterly reports, semi-annual? I mean, I shouldn't say reports, but as far as the funding requests for them for reimbursement, because when we do get to the point where we do the contract, we'll need to have that. We need a contract in place with them. That's something we definitely said, it's got to be for services for the most part, not for, yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
I would suggest not more often than quarterly.
No.
It's a lot of work to process those.
I think we used a template for that, and as soon as we did, it thought, shoot, but yeah, it was like, we change it next time.
We were a little paranoid when we, when we looked at, we just wanted to make it very clear that, hey, we're paying for a service being provided, and we are. But I, I don't see a problem with going to twice annually or something like that. But the, the concern, like was expressed earlier, is that services have to be provided before we're paying on this invoice. So the, the, the provider may want to go more often than that. I think quarterly might be a happy medium, but I'm not the one of us to process these things.
Yeah, I, I would think quarterly, um, would, would work because we don't, we don't want them, you know, especially some of these that are smaller and have super, super tight budgets. You don't want them going too far into your providing services and not, and not have, you know, the reimbursement for it.
And maybe we look at two or, not, not that we couldn't, subject to change, but like some of our larger, when we do the larger ones, obviously a quarterly maybe makes more sense, and some of those have been very small. And so then it wouldn't have to be as well. So it almost could be like a separate or unique contract, I guess, depending on size or services. Something like that, but we don't have to decide that today, but. So are we good for changing the, for the 60 days, but starting in August 1st and try to get the word out then to as many people as possible and getting that up? Okay, super. So it's been moved in seconded?
I'm sorry, I don't have a motion.
Oh.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just that one, we didn't go for, thank you. So we'll do a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Chalka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes, thank you.
Item C, motion that the reappointment of Joy Briscoe for a second term as representative for the Black Hawk County Veteran Affairs Commission effective July 1, '23 to June 30th, '26 be approved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, discussion and review of the draft RFP for healthcare, medical and mental health services for the Black Hawk County Jail. And I'm not sure how extensive this conversation needed to be today. Nate, obviously, has been one of the major, I think, probably people that have worked on this. And so I thought, um, after seeing some of his emails and comments on this, I, for myself, I wanted as much information as possible. I know he, he and I just talked briefly about a work session and didn't really think a work session was maybe needed, but that we just have good discussion, um, on the agenda. And so I thought with all the work that had been prepared, um, before and going into the RFP with you as a committee and especially maybe with he and Michelle working on this, just kind of telling us some of the highlights and that type of thing. As it turned out, I see Mark is here, and I don't know if Mark, you were wanting to or being prepared to speak to it. I see the sheriff's here as well. I know others are here with interest or concern. So it can be whatever we need today. I just thought to, just, um, before the RFP, it was just going to be helpful.
Yeah, sure, right. Nate didn't draft at the RP, RFP along with the, uh, um, the committee members. I can't answer much to the RFP, but I can, from experiences being a previous jail administrator, if you have any questions about that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does anybody want to discuss anything else or differently? That, like I said, I thought perhaps it's unfair, like I say, with Nate not being here.
I know that he wanted to present it and he was hoping to be able to do that next.
And he's on vacation, correct?
Correct.
And I think that was kind of where I just wanted to be sure we, I didn't, wasn't going to be responsible, I guess, for holding up another week, but it, that's fine with me to just wait the week if everybody, if the committee thinks it's all right to just wait until he's back. Um, it's your thoughts?
Yeah.
I do too, but I, that's why I just thought too, and, and it sounds like then maybe that it's all right. I thought with the committee, as far as everyone, just to, maybe we delay the, he, I think his intent was when he sent it, he said he'd be here the 18th or whatever, and then we could vote on it. And I guess I, I just thought I'd like a little more discussion before the vote, maybe to have some input and from everybody and apologize to the guests that probably came today to speak on that behalf and certainly could today if you wish, but I just thought probably better for next week unless someone needs it done.
I mean, I, I would like to actually be respectful of folks' time too that did show up.
Oh, sure.
If, if they've got something to say specifically, uh, to this, I, I think it'd be great if we give them the audience, um, just to, you know, we can honor their time. Um, and I also think when it comes to the, to the RFP, if, if there's a timeline that needs slightly adjusted because we waited a week to allow the discussion and presentation with Nate, I think that makes, that makes the most sense too.
Do it, yeah, that's great. Or you're all welcome to come back anytime too, as you know. It's nice to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sarah Geiger. I am one of the social workers at the jail. I actually work for Department of Corrections, but the jail, um, supports probably about 80% of my salary, so I do, um, work with all of the chronic mental health folks in our jail, um, and our community in many roles, actually. Um, but I'm not able to be here next week, so I just wanted to give a few comments. Um, that the mental health treatment in the jail is just vital. I can't express enough, um, not only is it a local issue, it's a national issue. Um, I do a lot with statewide jail diversion and other issues. It's a statewide conversation and money being pumped into training for law enforcement, training for clinicians, training for jails, um, law enforcement to be able to better manage our citizens in our community that, um, struggle with different issues. Um, we know though that people fall through the cracks and some people need to come to jail, so that's not, um, I'm not here as a proponent of nobody coming to jail. Um, and sometimes it's a necessary thing to get people back on track. I will share that our medical department and having a full-time psychiatric practitioner has been vital. Um, we've been able to manage some very difficult people in our system that we are not able to divert out of the system. Um, we've done a lot with mental health committals and being able to get people, because, and I don't know if you know this, we can't forcibly medicate in our jail. And so we have some very, um, ill individuals that we have to cooperatively try to get well and to manage in that setting. And to not have that full-time piece, and I only speak to the, the mental health piece, um, I just, again, cannot express how vital that is to, to those folks. And being able to, and I could give you many examples of those that come in and we're able to get them out into better services because we're able to stabilize them in jail. Um, and we have another social worker that works on the other pieces, educational, to try and again, get people ready to be productive citizens in our community. Um, we want people to be pro-social, we want people to, um, get the skills they need to be, um, productive citizens, right? To not be back in our jail systems and with our law enforcement, so, um, which again is vital with our medical department and being able to, to stabilize medical needs. We've had people that have had heart attacks. I had one of my clients have a stroke in the jail. And so, again, having that full-time service, um, is extremely beneficial to those people that we have in our custody. And unfortunately, you know, we have those people and we have a larger jail. And I work with a lot of other communities and a lot of other jails and have colleagues in many different areas of the state. And we are fortunate, again, some larger communities that we can compare to have similar services. Um, and I know the counties that do not struggle with being able to manage those difficult people and actually farm them out to our jail as well to be able to manage. So, welcome to answer any questions that you have, but I just wanted to express from my perspective, I've been doing this a long time, 24 years, um, and so I just have seen a lot of growth. And actually, um, recently, Navcare has opened up their system for Jess and I to be able to access their information. Um, I've had discussions with them about getting people involved with their long-acting injectables, their antipsychotics, to get people more stable. A lot of cooperation with community providers to provide information. They're doing a much better job of that. They're providing medications for 30 days when they leave so that we're not having a gap in services, um, and people aren't having to pay. We know that getting into agencies in a, a timely manner is difficult. Um, and so we've done a lot of coordination. And, you know, the other thing to their benefit is that I've talked with their tech people. Not a lot of companies allow you to talk with their directors and their owners and, you know, and those are conversations that I've been able to have at a local level. So I think that that's really, um, a great thing on their part, so. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer, otherwise.
I just appreciate everything you're doing. Yeah, I know you, it's, it's really vital work.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, just a couple other plugs. We, um, county social services actually in the mental health region has been funding, um, crisis intervention training for both officers, and they've been coming to our community. So I always like to put in a plug for them in our regions for, for our services for all entities, all law enforcement in all of your counties within Black Hawk County, all of the smaller communities, so I always like to give a plug to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment or anything today or make any comments about the programs or? Please.
Larry Mosley, good morning to everybody. Thus says the Lord, turn from our wicked ways. Turn from our wicked ways. Thus says the Lord, all ye that is righteous, turn back from sin. Thus says the Lord. Thus says the Lord, not too many's gonna say that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Well, if there is no one else to comment, anyone online? Okay, I see Tom's on there too. All right, thank you. We'll go on to item 10, the work session. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss any American Rescue Plan Act projects today?
Would you?
Super.
I just wanted, anybody want to go before me?
Looks like you're the, you're it.
Yeah, okay. So what I want to ask today is, has to do with the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. And right up front, I'm not asking for any more money, so just, so that's, that's my first statement. But here's, a, a concern is starting. that's my first statement, but here's, a, a concern is starting to evolve with us, the staff, as far as the engineering go, is, goes for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. When we originally put the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, it was approved to go ahead and move forward using ARPA dollars for this, the understanding was that we would have the engineer, engineer the entire trail, we would have everything engineered basically to 90% by the time they, they were finished. We didn't know how far we could go with the dollars, and, and right now, there were $5 million, that's what we talked about, being allocated towards the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We were lucky enough to get Destination Iowa for another 1.4 million, so at this point, we've got 6.4 million to put towards the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, okay? One of the first statements that, that came out of the, the final rule and all this, when we started this process with ARPA, is, if you're going to engineer it, you know, make sure you build it, or there could be issues. We're building right along, and we're using that money, and we're, and we're going to spend a lot of construction on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, we've already spent 700,000, 722,000 plus, and that's not counting the engineering. So, the question comes here, I sort of put the stops to the engineer as far as moving forward with Division Two, we're working on Division One right now, and we will soon, the RFP for Division One or Phase Two, the hard surfacing of that nine and a half miles of trail, that will be out here in just a little bit, and we'll be going, trying to get under contract with that. The current contract we have with Origin is for $519,000 and $902, something like that. That's all going to be covered, and, and we're in good shape. That contract will get us everything finished with Division One, hard surfacing will be done, everything will be done with Division One, it will also move us into Division Two, and it will get us preliminary design work done, okay? What we, what we were hoping to get to was 90% on Division Two, and the reason we wanted to get to that point was that if we get to 90%, we are basically shovel-ready. That could benefit us in a couple of ways down the road. If we find out a year from now, as we start to get towards that December 24 date, when we know we have to be under contract with these ARPA dollars, if we get into April, May, even June of next year, and we're finding out that some of the, you know, there are going to be ARPA dollars that might not get spent because of timeframes, calendar dates, and things like that, the 90, letting the engineer go forward with the 90% would have some projects ready to go, because we could get under contract quickly if we were at 90%, okay? But my question is, and the concern that we were starting to worry about is, if we let them go to 90%, with what we've got left to do, the money that we have left of that $5 million or 6.4 million with Destination Iowa in there, proportionally, will we, will it look, will it raise a red flag for an auditor if we've spent such, this amount of dollars on the engineer, but we only got this amount of work done? You see what I'm saying? Talk to Michelle about this a little bit, and we, we, we don't know, I, personally, I think we're going to be fine, but I don't think it's my job to just make those decisions and not bring all of you in and, and have this discussion. So, that being said, and I know this is kind of just dropped in your lap, and, and you can think about it, wouldn't necessarily need to make a decision today, the engineer has work to do, don't, they, they've still got work to do, but there will be a time when they're going to say, do you want us to continue? I don't know at this point, and we're going to ask that question very quickly, I don't know what that dollar amount would be from them to move forward. Now, that dollar amount would simply, whatever they, we would increase to get that to 90% would come out of the, the $5 million that we've already allocated, which is only going to shrink what we can do for construction, but we might only be able to do two bridges when we thought we could do three, type thing, because the engineer cost is going, so, again, I'm not asking for more ARPA dollars, I'm just simply saying, this is a concern that we have, and we don't know how they would view that, we, we, we just simply don't know. So, I'm open to comments, questions, anything you'd like me to go chase?
I mean, I think that you're probably correct, that, that we're safe, I mean, my suspicion is that, that that relates to, and be, where that guidance was, say, if you were going to do, you did the engineering to, to build a new building, or to completely remodel office, then you didn't do any of it, but that we're, speaking on a project that clearly a sizable chunk of construction is being done on, it, it seems to me that it's okay, and that, and I agree with your logic, that it makes sense to have that engineering done, so that the project is in place for, for whether it's left over ARPA dollars, or whether it's, you know, state grants or private grants that, that we can prove that we're ready to go.
And that's a great point, Chris, because that's the other part of this, if there were no ARPA, ARPA dollars left, then we can hop back on that merry-go-round, which we've been doing for many, many years, and that would be state rec trail, federal rec trail, TAP dollars, all those things, and we have the engineering ready to go, and, and people might say, but what happens if you wouldn't secure that funding for three years? The design really shouldn't change, it would only be the dollar amounts, and you would think that those would rise, but that would be dealt with through state rec trail grant, federal rec trail grant, whatever, but we would still have the engineering ready to go, so.
And you said you were going to ask the questions of what's the amount and what's the timelines?
Yeah, I, we would like to know from the engineer, we're going to go ahead and ask those questions of them, to get us on Division Two, 90%, which is what we originally were thinking we wanted, what would that be, and then we could take that dollar amount and then compare it to what we would have left over for actual construction. We will be able to do construction on Division Two, and we have one bridge selected, the bridge over Miller Creek, or what we call the C1 Bridge, that's the longest bridge we have left, it's the most expensive bridge we have left, it is not repairable, it will need to be replaced, so, there's a cost there, probably, I don't know, it's probably going to be $600,000 to $800,000 to do, to do that bridge, that money, I think, is there, and then we would have to look along the way, along, there are a couple of small bridges that are going to be replaced with culverts, they'll eliminate the bridges, they'll put culverts in in their place, which is great for the future, they will be there forever, and no more bridge repairs, replacements in a couple of spots, so we would be looking at those items to finish up that $5 million with whatever is left, but, so, that's our thought process, I just wanted to lay it out to you guys, you can think about it, as questions come up, please contact me and say, oh, did you think about this, or oh, did you think about that? It's just, it was a concern we had, and we just thought we should bring it to you, and, but it would certainly be, I think, a benefit in a couple of ways, to have those engineering plans to 90% and ready to go.
Yeah, sounds good, Mike.
Any other questions?
Not right now, but thanks, I appreciate you, bit timing, too, to bring this up, I was gonna say, during that discussion, that's why it's on the agenda for these kinds of situations, so thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, any reports or information from the board?
Yes. In the past couple of months, I've, I've heard from two citizens in regard to dogs running at large, and in one, it killed some chickens, the other one, it bit a gentleman, and it, actually, I believe it sounds like it broke a bone in his hand, and the county is lacking in regard to ordinances to address these issues. Waterloo actually has a fairly good ordinance in regard to our ability, our, a government's ability to enforce these dogs at large, as well as quarantining the animal, when it does engage in this behavior, and if it continues to engage in being at large and attacking animals or biting somebody, we can take progressive action to try to correct it. So, I'll, I'll work with Mike and talk with Mark and Rory and come up with a, now Waterloo's ordinance is quite involved, I'll, I'll try to come up with a more simple ordinance that I can share a draft of with the board, so we can try to address these issues, because I think it's probably occurring more than we even realize, and I was quite surprised that in the past two months, I've heard from two citizens, and as a matter of fact, they were, I asked one, I said, well, wait a minute, is this, is this the same dog that so-and-so told me about? He says, no, I, I live further up the road, I live near Finchford, and the other one occurred near Union Road and Mark Road, two totally separate, different, different animals, so I'll bring something back to the board.
Great, I was just gonna ask, was it two instances?
Dan, they report these?
Uh, they did, yeah.
To Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
Okay.
But we just, we simply lack the tools, I believe, in regard to an ordinance to effectively address them, because state law is kind of loose, state law is vague on what can be accomplished, uh, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did the sheriff?
For a long time, we haven't had an ordinance for, the one in Finchford, though, I think that the two neighbors were standing, it's unclear whose yard they were standing in, and he had him on the leash, and he bit him, but, we investigate dog bites, ensure quarantine and rabies and that type of thing, but as far as dogs running loose, there is no.
Nothing to address.
There's no teeth in it.
Okay, thank you.
No pun intended.
Is there anything else to come before the board? I was gonna say, I know, Michelle, the, the bond sale was at 10:15 or whatever, so I think that's where she's got to be headed, I was gonna say, to see what we'll have, is anybody going to be available, or is everyone maybe available for the 1 o'clock meeting today to zoom in or be in person for, take care of that?
I can zoom in if, as if we get the link.
Yeah, super, we'll get that, I was gonna say, we need the link sent out, anything else to come before the board?
Nope.
Only because I know she's running out, but that's like, Tom, anything on your end?
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Is that moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting's adjourned, thank you all.